I will call the meeting to order and we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Roko, Mayor Kratzky, I am present. Moko?
Present.
Groko?
Present.
Kufal?
Present.
Hadiya?
Present.
And Iker?
Here.
Before we approve tonight's agenda, we have one change. We are going to move 11A, the RS Fiber Cooperative Consent to Sale Request, to the first item after Communications Requests and Petitions. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, I will take a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So move.
We have motion from Iker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Comments, updates, concerns? Anyone, we don't, I don't see any citizens here to speak tonight. Any updates from council members? City staff?
I'll just bring up one thing. This is actually one of our checks in our packet here. This one's to Nielsen Blacktopping, our contractor for the street project. Ty had him do a little patchwork over on Third Street and he also had put in, they paved that little road that goes out to the East Water Tower, so right in front of the tower, right off of Tower Street. My question is, we can, we're proposing that we would, that for Tower Street out there, but that little, put in, that what they put in there to add that to the project. The other option, the other alternative would be to include it in the budget for the water. It's a little bit bigger cost. I think it was like eight thousand or do you know? Yeah, eight thousand dollar cost. So I would recommend if we put it in the bud, go ahead and put it in the project.
Contingency left, right?
Yes, yes. We had, we had enough.
Comes out of the borrowed money pot.
We actually, Justin will be here at the next meeting. We actually did very well on the project. It actually came in under. So we're, we're okay.
Sounds good.
So with that said then, if that's okay with everybody, I'd like to remove the check then. Nielsen had billed us separately for both of those items. So I'd like to remove that for now and then we'll add it to it and then we'll come back and we'll pay the Third Street one. So this would be, remove check number zero six five four nine four. Water and the eight oh one fund. Oh, the amount. I thought you said account. Ten thousand six hundred and ten. Yeah, the water tower is eighty seven hundred approximately.
So you're just looking for consensus to do so? Okay, and I think you have it. Anything else?
No.
Okay. So then we'll move on to the consent agenda and take a motion to approve it. Motion from Iker. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko.
So that would be the motion and remove, that would, having that removed then too, because that's in the consensus, part of the checks.
Okay. So that's part of the motion?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under Communication Requests and Petitions, we have information about the St. Francis Pork Shop Dinner, Pillow Cleaning, and the Senior Center Newsletter. Now we will move on to 11A, which is on page thirty-five in our agenda. And I'll turn that over to Steve to talk about the RS Fiber Cooperative Consent to Sale of Assets Request.
Okay. I could talk a long time on some of the history here, but I think we don't need to do that. I think your, most of you are very familiar with the history of RS Fiber and the community here. If there are some questions, we can certainly address those tonight. But the big news is, last week, there was a meeting between RS Fiber Cooperative, which is the actual company, and Renville Sibley County Fiber Joint Powers Board, which is made up of the cities and the townships in Renville and Sibley County. And basically, the cooperative announced that they have been soliciting for buyers for their company, starting earlier this year. The challenge was, first of all, trying to find interest in buying their company out in the rural Minnesota area. They narrowed it down to five companies. One did show some interest, but then they backed out, saying that they had some other priorities, and, but they said would still be interested. It might be just a couple of years down the road though. And that's where Hiawatha Broadband Communications, or HBC, stepped in and basically submitted a letter of intent or offer to purchase the company. Their offer was for fourteen, is for fourteen million. The cooperative board agreed that they, they weren't sure if that was a legitimate offer in light of their company worth and everything, so they hired an outside consultant to, who is familiar with broadband industry. And that consultant basically came back with saying, yes, this is a legitimate offer. So in their consultant's opinion, they, Jessica was at the meeting, of course, as well. She's, she's on the board. They went through a lot of financial, kind of, at the beginning, kind of setting the stage for this. They talked about their operational costs, their capital costs, and really, those two items were holding the line from a budgeting standpoint. It got into when they were talking about their debt, their debt obligations. They shared that they have just under thirteen million dollars worth of debt. And the big change in their debt, that's really taking a, making it very challenging for them, is when they refinanced a few years ago, they, they refinanced without fixed interest rates. And now those interest rates, because of the economy and interest rates in general have gone up, and so apparently, the agreement, when they refinanced, they had a basement and a ceiling on their interest rates, and now...
The co-op actually went with an arm, basically?
Something like that, I imagine. I don't, they didn't go into specifics as far as what that entailed, but basically, they said they have a basement and a ceiling on the interest rate, and with rates going up, now they're being assessed more for interest to the tune where it's costing them twenty thousand dollars more a month, is what they reported. And that is taking its toll on them. They basically stated they cannot sustain that level of debt and obligations that they have to meet. So the, basically, it's tapping into their reserves, and they reported that by the end of the year, roughly around the end of the year, they're going to have problems, to the point where they may default on their loans. So they're not going to be able to sustain the level of expenses, basically, that they are currently at. You know, based on the revenues that they're bringing in, the customer base that they have, they're not able to make it any further. So, HBC made this offer to them. They, they've, basically, my opinion, they seemed pretty excited about the offer, though they didn't show a lot of emotion, but they felt like, it kind of looked like, this is our ticket. This is our saving grace, so to speak. Of course, they didn't say it like that or anything, but where the discussion kind of evolved too, and there, there was some cities that were fairly frustrated with them. Jessica, you can chime in here, but there was some that were saying, why did you wait until now to tell us this? You know, why couldn't you have given us a little bit more of a heads up? Why didn't, you know, they didn't distribute nothing before the meeting. Everything was presented at the meeting, so there was no prep time for this. There was no way of knowing what was coming. There was no way of preparing for yourself or any questions to ask them. It was just, here it is. So, and maybe that was just the way it was done on purpose. They didn't want to maybe have a lot of feedback or a lot of questions asked them. I don't know. But it was what it was. And ultimately, what came out of that discussion was, and it was actually brought up by their financial consultant from David Drowne, and he was actually questioned too, why didn't you share this information with us? Well, he, he stated that I have a contract with the cooperative where I am not at liberty to share that kind of, or disclose that kind of information. And so, he also asked a question, though, he said, as far as the shareholders or the creditors, you know, what's going to happen to the remaining funds that they have left after the sale? And so that's where it kind of led into hiring Kennedy and Graven, who apparently drafted the loan agreements to begin with, to go back and look at those agreements, to check, to see, you know, where do the cities line up as far as the creditors are concerned? Where in line are we? You know, where, you know, is it, are we going to be seeing anything out of this? If, if it would go through, that is. Apparently, there, I have never seen it myself, I don't know if you have, but there is an agreement between the co-op and the joint powers where they actually do have to come to the joint powers and ask for the sale of assets, to get that approval from the board. And it's, it's a simple majority vote. My understanding, the ten cities that serve on the board, plus the chairperson, and I think the vice chair also get the vote? If that sounds familiar?
Greg doesn't, no.
Okay. Well, I know the ten cities for sure.
Yeah, they are, they, the ten cities are the only ones that can vote on that.
Are one representative?
Me.
Yeah.
The townships don't get to. It's just the...
Just the cities?
Yes.
Because we're the only ones that got anything at stake here.
Yes.
The townships, there, there's no financial stake here at this point. So, what they did is they set up their next meeting for later this month. I think it was the twenty-fifth? And so that, I wanted to get this on the agenda, so in case you wanted to have two discussions on this, we have two meetings. So, but basically, tonight, or by at least our next meeting, we need, the council needs to decide whether or not they're going to go along with this consent to sale.
How's that even enough time? I mean, every step along the way, it seems like it was the wrong step from day one on this whole thing. My concern is, is it, what if there's twenty to twenty-five million dollars of assets in the ground? I mean, what's the other alternative look like? Bankruptcy?
Right. And then, then we're, yeah, then it's done. But I think the reason why they didn't bring it to us before is because they would have to disclose all that to the public, and they just don't want everyone pulling out because they think that it's gonna go away. It's, it's not. The service is there. There's going to be no interruption in service. And the later discussion was that the joint powers board wants to get their own appraiser. And I think with Shannon, the Drowne and Associates, we gave, yeah, Sweeney. It's still him.
It's all the same players, though. And that, they let us down the wrong road from day one.
No, that's, technically, that's not true. Shannon would say, in his financials, that he doesn't see it sustaining at this level. You know, he would give this, he couldn't give us total financial disclosure. He could only present so much.
Right, but why would you sign the R and Jessica? Why would you sign the R as far as a co-op goes, that'll balloon on you, and then now they can't pay? Why was that done?
I don't know. I mean...
Yeah. Maybe they were in no position that nobody was willing to finance them. I don't know. It's hard to say, you know, that was on them. They took that risk. They took that, you know, I don't know if they were projecting out what that could do to them as a company.
No, because they projected so much growth.
Right. Yeah.
Which, which they never got, and they kept talking about how they're going to grow and...
Well, they, they have been, some in the background, two thousand and eighteen, they had a twenty-four to one debt to asset ratio, and that has improved over the years. They were saying at that time, eight, nine years, we'll, we'll get to where we need to be, so then we can start taking over the bond payments, which was a three to one ratio. Right now, they're probably about eight to one, or something like that. I had to go back in my notes. They do, they did share that information earlier this year. So they have been making some headway. Actually, Gaylord is one of their highest customers.
What are the, what are left on the bonds?
Thirteen years. Total of, with the interest, one point eight million over, a little over that. We pay a little over a hundred and forty thousand each year, and it's going to be like that through the life of the rest of the bonds. That's what we're going to be obligated to.
And they just, they just walk away. Sale, they just walk away with it?
Yeah, and that, there's nothing in this proposed sale that would cover the bonds. The cities would be, basically, continue to be solely responsible for them.
And we want somebody, the joint powers board wants somebody to look at where in line we are in the creditors, and how much we would, if we would get anything.
How do, how do we know that the bankruptcy, or going that route, ain't better? You know, depending upon where in line we are, sell the stuff off.
That's where I was hoping Mark might be able to chime in a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, the thing about bankruptcy is that it, it's tough to know unless you have real insight into their finances, if, what type of bankruptcy they would file. So when you think bankruptcy, a lot of people just think personal bankruptcy, where certain assets mostly just get liquidated, you get to keep certain assets. There's something like that when you're dealing with corporate entities, but there's also other chapters you can file under. And one of them would be, I think it's like chapter eleven or thirteen, but it's a reorganization. So I think there is a likelihood, a chance, that this, these circumstances, because it's utility, they have a ton of assets, a customer base that is at least somewhat sustains itself. It's really debt has driven them into this nosedive. So, in a restructuring bankruptcy, typically what happens is, is the, you file, everything goes on as usual, and you come out with restructured debt. I don't know enough about the bond offerings. I wasn't the city attorney at the time to know how the city would be treated in those circumstances. It sounds like the joint powers board, for its part, is trying to track that down on behalf of the cities. But that would be meaningful information to have before the city makes a decision, frankly. You know, this, this request, or this press release, and then coming from the joint powers board, you know, it is a little lean on information. There's not a whole lot of context to go on. It sounds like there was more context being provided to the, you know, at the actual meeting, and a lot of it did add up. So I'm not trying to, to say that they're actively misleading, but in the context of councils trying to make the decision, all you have to go on is a pretty cursory press release. So, that, that is a little concerning from the lawyer's part, because they're asking the city to consent to something and to perhaps give up rights with only having a very small sliver of information. So I think that reason alone would be to probably try and take some more time on this, if there's time in the schedule. But it's not clear to me exactly how much information ultimately they're willing to provide. Keep in mind, we also have a franchise agreement with RS Fiber. So I, I don't have a ton of insight into the bonds, but I did go over the franchise ordinance. And there's also a requirement in that ordinance that the parties to the sale, so the buyer and the seller, so RS Fiber and RMC, need to approach the city in writing request that the sale be approved and, by the city, and essentially, the franchise be transferred to the new franchise holder. So that is not what is happening here. Apparently, this seems to be going through the, the joint powers board. It's not even clear to what extent that they're aware that they have to do this. I mean, has there been any talk of this, Steve? I know we didn't even have a chance to discuss this. So, whether that's part of this or not, they're going to have to come back to the city at a certain point before they do this deal to get approval. But a lot of the issues that are swirling are dealing with these bonds, and not necessarily issues that are, you know, right on point with the franchise. So it doesn't necessarily say in the franchise that our approval has to be limited to that, to transferring the franchise, but, you know, that's another component of what needs to be done. But I, I think the, I'll, I'll say this, it's not clear to me exactly what the city's rights are right now as a creditor. Again, we haven't had a chance to, to really dive into that yet. But in terms of where we stand on these bonds, and maybe Steve can give me more information on this, what is, what is their actual responsibility to pay, or?
None.
Zero responsibility, so...
It's on us.
We're the bondholders.
Mm-hmm.
So what happened, like, with this, HBC, if they purchase it, and they start making money or get to that ratio they need to be, would they start helping pay those bonds in, or can it be set up that way?
I mean, it doesn't sound like the transaction is set up like that right now. Basically, they've said, you know, we have way too much debt. We have these sort of tertiary obligations to the cities, and there's, given the time constraints, and I'm editorializing a little bit here, this is the offer that they got, and it sounds like it's within line of what it was appraised at, but the city's obligations, or the bond obligations these cities have, it's not clear to me if, if that is even factored into this transaction, so I...
That's a, one, if it can be transferable, like if this Hiawatha, Hiawatha Broadband gets it, and they, they keep it running, it's basically changing names, a different company, why couldn't it be set up that if they start making money, that they can make these bond payments like RS is supposed to be doing?
I can only presume that RS Fiber came to the realization that, from a legal perspective, they, they don't have a legal obligation to pay on these bonds. So they've essentially said, in the interest of keeping the RS Fiber Grand Experiment going, they're going to ignore those obligations, and basically say, you know, by approving this, joint powers board, cities, you're going to be responsible for this money, to retire it in eleven years, or whatever the number was. So, it's not clear to me how much leverage you have in that respect, other than this approval. So it really does come down to whether the city wants to approve this or not, given where they stand with these bonds.
How's the vote work? Jessica?
I bring, I bring, I know, like, for the joint board, I bring it back to you, and we kind of decide and tell me how to vote.
So the, but the majority vote here is what she would carry?
Yeah, I, I think that's how, at least Steve and I kind of contemplated this going.
That was like what, when they redid their loans, I brought it back to you, and we discussed it and decided what we were going to do. And then I voted on that.
Yeah, it, it just looks like, you know, to be honest, I mean, it's a sweetheart deal for a company to swoop in, get a turnkey, and they wipe their hands of it. In all ten cities, they're sitting here, paying the seven point four nine million dollars till, what, twenty, thirty-seven? When that's...
But here's the thing. They are wiped of it. Those bonds are all on us.
Right. I know that, Jessica, but why would we hand over the keys to a company so HBC can go on and make, you know?
Red Lobster was, just filed bankruptcy recently, too. They just filed this summer, and they're still running in Mankato, and they did it to get rid of their debt.
That's my point, though, Chad, is what I'm saying is, if RS Fiber would be making money, and like you said, if they got to that three to one, they would be making, helping with the bond payment.
That's what they said they would do. They're, as Mark pointed out, legally, they're not bound to do any of that.
So they, they could, they, they would never have to make a bond payment if they don't want to?
RS Fiber?
RS Fiber.
I thought RS Fiber was obligated. This new company is...
No.
No. I think it was just an understanding that Jessica helped me here, but I think that was the understanding, is that they were going to be making those payments. That was how it was set up. But legally, I don't think there's anything that stands...
But the same people that wrote all this front-end documentation and paperwork and drew everything up, they're the same people trying to help now.
Yeah.
I'm telling you.
Right.
They're the ones who put in writing that you can walk away from seven point nine, or seven point four million
Yeah.
dollars, and, and, and they, they started this a few years back already with it, all the cities. We, we realize that. But they're the ones who started that. Yeah, so then that's who we're relying on now to walk us through this?
No, 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 no. That was just one of the options with, was with Shannon's company. But we were just talking about getting some, an appraisal, you know, that we need, the joint powers board needs to do this on behalf of the cities.
I, I would say that's absolutely right, that if you can get a good appraisal, you can see, like, well, okay, this is what it's, what it's worth.
Yeah, and where the, where we sit in line of the creditors.
Right. Who's paying for that appraisal?
The joint powers board. We think we have fourteen hundred dollars.
When's that going to come back?
Our next meeting is, we, we had, we couldn't decide on it, anything. We, we just got the information and we discussed it, but I, we really couldn't make a decision on that because, you know, like I said, we need to bring it back to our cities and blah, blah, blah. And so our next meeting is the twenty-fifth. And then I think we already got the next meeting set up after that.
But I, but I agree with, with, with the inside here, like, why are we going to continue to trust those people that have led us awry with making these financial decisions with, with everything that's come to this point?
I mean, I want to see the pros. Why would we help a, a company with a sweetheart deal instead of, I want to know the pros and cons in both scenarios. I mean, why, what does bankruptcy look like? If it looks the same, what's the difference financially?
Yeah.
The creditors, you know, who's in line where, what scenario?
Sure.
The cities have an upper hand, one way or the other? I, I don't know that. I mean, this is all news to the us.
So, and sorry, I got to run here, but I absolutely can paint a picture of, as best I can at least, of how this would play out potentially. So what is the best way for me to present that? Should I do a memo and Steve can circulate it?
Sure.
Okay.
Great.
All right, I will try and do that. I know time is of the essence, so as quickly as possible.
Should we put this back on the agenda next month, or next meeting?
Yeah, I think absolutely.
Okay. Just do it that way, he can have a memo. We'll put it in the packet.
I'm really sorry that I have to run. My apologies.
We knew you had to leave.
Don't apologize for working.
Yeah, because we'll have the eighteen, and that's the one before the RS Fiber.
Yeah.
If they have no financial obligation on the bonds, I guess, I'm guessing bankruptcy, we won't do anything, because that's not one of their financial obligations. So why would we?
I want to see advantage. I mean, we know where we're sitting, no matter which way this goes. So, for the most part, as far as the bonds, we're responsible for them.
But I think we're hooked, on the hook, because if they're not, have no legal obligation for them bonds, why would a bankruptcy clerk say they have to pay anything back on them? Because they're not legally obligated.
Right. I, I want to know, why would we help a company walk away with the keys for this company?
I, right.
For these assets.
I hear what you're saying on that.
I want to know why, or what advantages it to the city of Gaylord and the taxpayer? Why would we help them?
It's just so dirty. It's amazing that can happen to you.
Yeah, it's not good news at all.
I would rather do nothing than make another move, because, like I said, every move that has been made dealing with this RS Fiber, which is in many ways connected to the old medical school problem, you know, RS Fiber had to be done, and so we could get the medical school. And so all this stuff is tied together by a lot of the same entities and people. But whatever, we could talk about that forever.
Well, we are not ready to make a motion to approve or not approve it, so we're just going to leave it at consensus, put it on our next agenda, and Mark will do his research. So that being said, we will move back to department reports, and I think Ty is first under nine C. So come on up to the podium, Ty, and talk about grader tire replacements.
Yeah. Good evening. So, our Volvo Road Grader is in need of some new tires. Mostly, it's dry rot, is what's happening to them. So I res, I got a quote for all six tires, but after looking at our budget, we had just brought that, bought that broom. We're going to want to replace just the front tires this year, because those are the ones that are most in need of being replaced, and then try to get the, the back four replaced next year. The quote through, this is through POMPS, they actually looked at the state contract and, and Sourcewell. We used Sourcewell when we bought the payloader tires, because they were cheaper than state contract. But now they're saying the Sourcewell and the state contract are basically the same price. And these are the same style of tires we have on everything else. They're Michelin's X Snowpluses, which we use on the other grader and the, and the payloader. And the total for all six tires was fifteen thousand... And the total for all six tires was fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-six. But for only two, we're talking about fifty-two to fifty-four hundred dollars for them to replace them, um, this year. Like I said, next year we'll come back and try to get the rest of them replaced. So this, this fifty-four hundred would come out, the, uh, street budget on the veal, vehicle maintenance side lined four hundred, four hundred and four, sorry.
Those are original tires, it's a twenty-twelve, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a twenty-twelve. So one of the front tires, they're all Michelin's that are on there, except for one of the front ones is a, it's an oddball. That they must have had a flat and replaced, it's a cheapie, and it's really showing really bad signs of dry rot on the sidewalls. And we just noticed it three weeks ago, so I figure we better get that, at least the fronts replaced before winter, so.
We're looking for a motion to approve the replacement of two front tires for the Volvo grader, for an amount not to exceed five thousand four hundred dollars from POMPS Tire in Mankato.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Kufal. Can we get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eker. Any further discussion or questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next, we'll move on to info and infiltration discussion.
Don't have anything on that this month. They're just keeping on the, keeping on the agenda.
I mean, we're hoping to have a plan in place by the end of the year, though, as far as starting televising, right?
Right, yep. So, yeah, that's something we're still working on, so.
Okay, well then we'll move on.
Anything else for, any questions of me about anything?
Oh, I just, I, I, I just wanna stress the priority on that aye and aye stuff.
Right. We'll keep hammering away.
I just, I wanna see action on it before the year's end, that we can show to the people in town that something's being done.
Right. So a lot of that's gonna be ordinance and, and methodology and how we're gonna approach that stuff, so. So I, I will bring, we'll bring that back to council here, yeah, either next meeting or the October meeting, so.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ty.
Thank you.
Next, under nine D Police Department, we have, um, some discussions about the ATVs and golf carts operating after sunset, so Charlie is here to talk to us tonight.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, yeah, just kind of a conversation piece on what we wanna do with our city ordinance regarding ATVs and golf carts. Right now, can operate them after sunset and before sunrise, just kind of a conversation piece to see what you guys' thoughts are, if you wanna modify that, uh, to allow people to maybe drive them a little later after dark. Looking for, uh, opinions and thoughts.
Um, I think, we talked about this last month, and I was in favor of changing the time, uh, just simply because I think that a lot of those side-by-sides are like little cars, they have turn signals on them, um, they have horns on them, and so I don't really see that much of a difference. Yeah, I know a lot of communities have exemptions to those, uh, ordinances and allow them to, like, where I work, they're allowed to drive all night long, so I, I don't know if midnight is the time or to even have a time for them. I, I don't know what, why, why midnight makes any sense. Sorry about that. What the significance of that time was. I don't know. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, I don't know why Arlington went with midnight, but that's what they have, and Winthrop, I guess, would kinda repeat in yourself from last time, but Winthrop currently has the same ordinance we have, and Arlington allows, uh, up until midnight and then not before six.
So what happens if you catch a golf cart going around that doesn't have lights on?
That's a problem. You know, the, the, yeah, the snow, the slow, I don't wanna, you can't just get away with a slow-moving triangle.
Right.
Right.
And tha, that's what we have to, that's the more important thing, right, that you have legitimate lights, front and back, signals, if you're gonna be operating in dark.
Absolutely.
Maybe you separate the two then, and you have a time for the golf cart. Side-by-side is different.
Because there, there's a lot of golf carts that don't have, you know, brake lights on them.
Yeah, they have the, I've seen.
They might have headlights, but they don't have the brake lights and the turn signal.
Or the turn signals.
Some do.
I think two, you'd have to separate them out, that we can't lump them together and then have golf carts that don't have the proper lighting.
Yeah, the way it's written right now, golf carts aren't required to have that, but again, you can't operate them after dark, so if we're gonna change something to allow it after dark, then they're definitely gonna have to have it.
And what was the one request, was what, for ATVs or was, or?
As far as why we're here?
Yeah, the resident came forward wanting golf carts or side-by-side?
I have no idea.
I was the one to talk to him. Um, I believe it was, uh, an ATV.
I was approached two months ago about it, and, uh, told the individual, I'd just bring it up to the city's attention, and it is ATV that he has.
I think if you just set up the criteria, or if it is a golf cart, it still has to have all the things that the ATV would have to have, is the brake lights, the signal lights, the headlights. You know, just the criteria to be able to operate any kind of those vehicles after dark.
I mean, you could do that, leave a group together and then they would just have to follow it. These are the, right, you have to have the turn signals, headlights, taillights, brake lights.
Yeah, if we do that, we're really gonna have to obviously start watching for that, not that there's a lot out there now, but, uh, after dark.
You'd be surprised.
I, I suppose, I guess I'm not out there at night, in the middle of the night anymore, but, uh, otherwise, yeah, people are gonna get by with, oh, I'm, I won't drive it at night, I don't need all that stuff, and then, you know, as soon as summer rolls around, they're gonna be cruising around in the dark without that stuff on there, so.
I think on the ATVs, you're not gonna see as big of an issue as you will with the golf carts, where you're gonna run into the issues, I think.
Yeah, because the ATVs are gonna need that anyways, regardless of if it's day or night.
Vehicles being driven around, though, they don't have all the bells and whistles, so there might be some ATVs too that aren't, don't have lights yet or don't have blinkers. So I just think we need to do a lot of public education.
Yeah, making sure that those permits are on there.
Right.
And, you know, it's the same thing, like, I, I don't know, I, I've seen them like whipping down the highway, literally.
The golf carts or the ATV?
It's not a, it's not a brunette female, is it? You might know her.
I mean, the other, other thing too, when you say ATV, that's kind of a lumping a lot of things into one. Like your side-by-sides aren't really an ATV. So when you say ATV, are you talking like just a four-wheeler with one headlight on it?
Right.
You know, technically, so it should be probably defined better.
Yeah.
Because there's class, different classes of the ATVs and stuff, so it should be broken out.
In the definitions?
Yes.
I agree. So I have a definition of a four-wheeler, UTV?
UTVs.
And then a golf cart. I, I've also seen, Charlie, you got one of those little trucks, what do they call them?
Mini truck.
The mini things?
Yes.
Like, is it white?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sits up on, uh, in the Lincoln area?
Yeah. I don't know that thing yet, but.
Uh, I talked to him and I had a conversation with him, and he produced a paperwork, and apparently it's, I, I, I don't remember, but whatever it was, it qualified it for whatever he had it licensed as, from what I could tell.
So you probably wanna add that then to, to your definition.
That's why, instead of, can it not just be that these are the requirements and don't worry about what type of vehicle it is, but you have to meet all the requirements? Instead of trying to guess what the next thing is that's gonna be out here and moving around.
So if you say it's gotta have two headlights, two taillights, turn signals, front and back, brake lights, and?
But do we want like traditional four-wheelers?
But they don't have that, two headlights.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah, I mean, you just have to be specific, I guess, and then maybe it can be one thing, instead of trying to break it into the different things.
Well, I think that'd definitely be easier for us as enforcement, and try to, ah, is that a UTV and ATV?
Right, what is it? Right.
Yeah, to have it just in one.
Right. Is this a consensus, kinda then, uh, what are you saying, like twenty-four, seven type of thing? No, no re, no deadline on the time?
To me, fine. I think you have to do that and then worry about who's after midnight and who's.
Right, and to me, the most important thing is just that it's well, it's safe.
Sounds, sounds good to me.
Okay, we'll go look at updating that ordinance then. Anything else for us?
We'll bring that back at a future meeting. We'll, it's okay, we'll do a draft up.
Yep.
And bring it back and then.
Sounds good. Anything else for us?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, under nine G, Gaylord Library, we have the hiring of a library assistant.
Yes, uh, our committee interviewed a few candidates, and Deb Eker is our proposal here as far as, uh, the position is concerned. Again, this is a part-time library assistant position. Uh, she's accepted, um, and this would be at grade two, step one, or eleven sixteen an hour, effective immediately. So Ruth Wal, Walter, um, she's gonna be retiring completely then. She's been hanging in there, holding on until we fill the position. She was kind enough to do that. So, um, uh, as soon as, um, the council approves this, then probably the next meeting, we bring back her resignation.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Moko, seconded by Padia. Any further discussion or comments?
I have something. Just to let you know, I did finish the background on her earlier this afternoon, and she's good to go with that, so there's no issues or concerns.
Okay, perfect.
Is it, there's two Deb Ekers in town, right?
I think this is the one that used to work at Provo.
That's I'm wondering.
Yeah, it's Michael Foods, yeah.
Oh, Kenny's.
Yeah, there are two. I ran into them, like, well, which one is it?
So it must be the one in town that lives in town here?
There used to be three, three, but one moved away, so. It's my mom's cousin that moved away.
The other Deb Eker, they don't live?
Well, no, no, um, that would be my mom's first cousin. She used to live in rural Gaylord, but she still visits a lot.
Which one?
The one in town here.
Yes. Kenny Eker's wife.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I know that.
Okay, so all in favor of hiring Deborah Eker as the part-time library assistant position, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, next, we're moving on to unfinished business, ten A, ordinance number three sixty-seven. This is the second reading. So we need a motion to adopt ordinance number three sixty-seven and ordinance amending chapter one fifty-three, section one fifty-three point four-nine, pertaining to allowing billboard signs as a conditional use in the I two heavy industrial district. So anyone wanna make that motion? Motion from Padia, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we need a motion to approve the summary of ordinance number three sixty-seven and its publication.
Let's go move.
Second.
Motion from Kufal, seconded by Moko. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Any closing comments or anything else from staff or council?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn from Eker, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say, second, I'm sorry, second from Kufal. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.